All right, good morning, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the order of the April 23 meeting of the Press and Cabinet Commissioners. Please stand and play the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united on indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Can we have anyone have you not think so? Review the bills this time.
At this time, I'm moved to pay the bills that have been properly presented and reviewed.
I will second that mission.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stan?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, I will not see these sessions, so we will skip that. And bring us the Nancy Walker at 1:31.
Thank you, how are you this morning? This is for a budget revision. First up, uh...
They're actually...
All right, well, I'll present it and I'll skip it.
Okay.
I'll... So this is a from training and education, $600 from training and education line item in our budget to building equipment, and that's just to cover the cost of the copy year. As we talked, that increased cost is just to cover that. And then we are taking $3,000 for travel and taking materials and supplies, so we can just take care of things throughout the end of the camp season, come into the camp season, of course. And then additionally, in this letter is an additional line item transfer. And so I received, went to a national conference, National Extension Conference, received basically honorary scholarship for attending. The cost of the conference was $500, I got $450 back. So we, in the tax office, and so the second part of this is the transfer from the tax office back to our training, travel line. And so that is what I have to read.
We tried to make, we out of a couple of the line items in the 2024, 2025.
Yeah, and so I think we knew we were going to hit this copy year issue. We brought that, we had our budget, and it's just to cover us through the end of the, you know, then the year, so, gotcha. And, you know, as we did. Any questions?
We'll take care of that when we take care of the other.
Certainly, certainly. Thank you so much. You guys have a good day.
Thanks, Dan. All right, group call minutes.
At this time, I'm moved to approve the minutes for April 9, 2024.
Second?
Commissioner, for a second, approve the minutes for April 9. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stan?
Yes.
Yes. State stuff, it's P.I.
I move to dispense with the readings of the proceedings and vacation and enter them into record and move them to session for April 11, 2024 through April 17, 2024.
Second?
Commissioner, for a second, to set the previous indications, that's for three. Commissioner Stan?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner, Commissioner report, they have a first quarter state report, Mr. Woodhew, E. Turner, Commissioner, just moved, we accept that into the record.
At this time, I'm moved to approve the budget here, Commissioner report for the 2024 first quarter state status report for April 11, 2024, now by Woodhew, E. Turner.
It just needs to be there.
It just needs to be filed, that's it. That's it.
Um, I will, I will second that mission.
Commissioner, for a second, to accept and file this report. Commissioner, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stan?
Yes.
Yes. Full business update, the sheriff's line of statements. Melissa, I do, how are you today?
Good. I brought you with the current line of errors report. Um, this is for January. You can see on the, um, on the, you see the, the only one that really has an error on that, it's the only one, since I'm missing a dollar or D M V. But tax clearing is the one that we're having an issue with. Um, July looks good. Um, there's like 500 in, um, August, and then there's a 10,000 in, um, September. So that's what we're working on. Um, tax clearing is the only one that I'm working on because that's the only one that has an issue. There is nothing missing, it's just whether a deposit got entered or a, something got reconciled, um, just but there is a lot that goes into tax clearing. That's through January.
That's where I started, huh?
Yeah. There's a lot that goes into tax clearing, it's every day, I mean, every deposit, we do everything. So, um, it's just a matter of what I didn't get entered for. I mean, $10,000 in, honestly, that could be one transaction.
Yeah.
So...
Depending on what it was, yeah.
Depending on what it was. So that's the one that I'm working on. Dan is coming again Thursday. I worked last night, um, and with D M V, there was a couple of things at D M V that wasn't right, um, but I found those, like, one month had $1,400, one month had $900. Those were just errors, um, that didn't get... All the D M V transactions that happen daily, I have to enter every single transaction, daily transaction. So it was a deposit that wasn't put in, or it was a deposit that got put in, but it, the numbers got transposed or something, so, but I'm down to a dollar in D M V, um, and then tax clearing is what I'm working on and what Dan and I will be working on Thursday.
So, um, and I, I know, send an email to me Friday maybe, Friday or Thursday, but what completion do you think for that?
I'd say we're about 90% complete now. I said, once I get tax clearing done, and it's, it's, it's only in like September and November, there's...
Okay.
So I'm down to like two months that I've got to look at.
After we get that done, we're having a right...
Yes.
D M V is good, order of health, all that.
Everything is good, except the tax clearing, and like I said, it's just two months. And then as you see, like in January, you get this negative balance bit in January, you got a positive balance.
You got a positive balance, I saw that, yeah, I saw it was like 10,000.
It's maybe something that didn't get cleared one month, but didn't get reconciled in the right month or something.
Yeah, I saw that.
It's just something.
We're moving in the right direction in the current...
Yeah. Yeah, this will be up to, this will be up to current, once I get it done, it'll be through March.
How's the sheriff?
Good, yeah, I'm planning today, so he won't care.
When do you, I mean, when do you anticipate?
I'm hoping to have it done Thursday.
Okay, that's why I was hoping to...
That'd be great.
Yeah. I mean, I'm hoping I find it today, and I don't need them on Thursday.
Yeah, that'd be great, that'd be great.
But, um, yeah.
If you're quickly approved, just give us that heads up email.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, you'll be the first ones to...
Okay, thank you.
If you hear me screaming and yelling and throwing confetti.
I do have a quick question, though. This is dated from 7/1, 2023 forward, but then everything prior to that, so from June 23 back to, because we don't have statements from...
To October.
Right. That should all be done now, right?
It should be. I went from the settlement.
Okay.
I went from the settlement forward.
Okay, yeah, so, gotcha.
But I don't think you want to print any of the monthly reports off, so you have everything reconciled.
Right.
Right, but if the settlement is set, anything prior to that should be good, no?
Yeah.
Our last, our last statement was October of 20...
Two.
22.
So October from 22 to June should be done, no?
Yeah, yeah. So you should be able to print all monthly financial statements for that period, that's what makes...
That's when I wasn't here. I wasn't in this position in October of 22. And with the record keeping that I have, I mean, let me just clarify, there's nothing missing, nothing's missing. So, but with the record keeping that, that was there, it's very hard to come into a position, number one, that I didn't know anything about, and number two, to delve through somebody else's work and come up with how they did it.
And that, that's true.
And everything that she did, everything that was done was in Excel. So this is done in the system where you can't, you can't put in wrong stuff, or you get that.
If you get errors, right.
Um, there's no, if there's a deposit of transit, it's there, if there's a, you know...
Yeah, I know, we don't want to be tough on you because you came into this, and it's more of a, um...
So, I tried going through that stuff and getting her stuff. And I, I mean, the C P A had a hard time, I had a hard time, and we basically just got rid of everything and started from scratch. With what we had in the bank balancing to the bank, which is what we have to do, which is what I'm supposed to do, is balance to the bank. So...
So everything...
With everything that was, everything that was in the settlement included, October through June. So that's why I took the numbers from the settlement and started with those.
Gotcha.
And went forward.
Okay.
So you're saying it would be hard to produce numbers for...
It's going to be hard for me to produce a financial statement from the information that I had...
Prior, for prior numbers, yeah.
Yes. However, like I said, the C P A went through every single account and came up with the settlement, and I went from that settlement forward.
Because she had a good start.
Yes, that's where I had my starting point.
We're moving in the right direction. I mean, Commission, did we have any issues with not having financial statements from last fiscal year? Since we have a year in settlement, is that fine?
If it's not something that can be typically produced based on those documents, I mean, what choice do we have to keep on? Um, the sheriff signs off on them?
The sheriff will sign off on a report.
On the settlement, yeah.
That should be good enough, in my opinion, because the C P A has went through all the prior records to get to that point to say, this is what you are, this is where your baseline is now.
Yes.
So, and also the sign off on it, I think that should...
Right, but, yeah.
I mean, we need the monthly financial statements for this current year, but...
We definitely need for this year.
Oh, absolutely.
So do we have...
And going forward, I plan to have those like, protected every month.
Can the sheriff sign off on the 23, 20, or no?
22, 23, 24.
23, yeah. Year in settlement, yeah.
I mean, I'm speaking for him, like, yeah, I mean, I don't...
That's what we need.
I don't, I don't see why he could not, because like I said, that's where I started, and that's where I'm balancing to, and everything's balancing.
If you could communicate that to him originally, he told us he didn't need to sign off because the C P A did it.
The C P A, that was the, that was the recommendation from the C P A, was that that's why they put in that beginning letter, that it was their truth page, whatever, is that there's no need for him to, because they've done it.
But when we spoke with the auditor and Doug in distinct code, they pretty much said that that has to be signed off by the elected official, so that would be the sheriff. So if you could get that and then just give us an update when you get all of it completed.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you for that statement. All right. Uh, I hope we can, the county, the county property provisions discussed...
Yes, that is, that's what I've been working on. So, um, with, with the property, Don, of course, wasn't at the meeting, but the land that I'm proposing that is used to build a county burn facility on, um, over there is not quite where the, the master plan had it listed back when the county did a master plan in 2010. And so, uh, right now, uh, I need to speak with the county fire board, uh, Thursday night, I believe, for Nicole, is that correct? Thursday evening, uh, with a couple of things, because I, I certainly want to work with them in doing, I, I don't want to take, um, action on something if it's not something that they, um, are in agreement with, that would be pointless. So I have a couple of options that I want to propose, and I'm waiting on one callback about liability stuff and, and excavation, so, um, as soon as I have that, we could actually take action, but I don't want to really do that much more.
We need a proposed plan.
Correct, correct, and that's one of the things that I've got to work with them, uh, on, on Thursday. And so, uh, once I have that, then I believe, what, what I'm proposing is that either, two, two options, either we retain the property and the facility is built on it, or we, um, look at, uh, giving it, uh, to the fire association, it's just...
Generally speaking, what we've done in the past is feed something to somebody, and if they have not done anything within five years...
Correct, correct.
Then all that reverses back to us.
Correct, um, but upon my research with other areas that have these burn facilities and looking at templates of how, how they do business.
Depends on how much they're willing to be, because if we owned it, we would probably case insurance, there would be that liability there. So it just really depends on how involved we want to be and how involved they want us to be.
And that's, that's what I need to, uh, work with, through them, and engage that on Thursday, so, yes.
Great.
Um, I, it is coming along, I've got some good information, and I'll share that and see what their desire is for that, and then we can, uh, discuss it more and, and move towards a decision on it, one way or the other.
Okay.
All right.
That brings us down to Camp Ambulance Funding Request. And having looked at the contract that you got signed with the volunteer department, section 13, paragraph B, clearly states they're supposed to fix all this stuff, so why we have, why are we being asked to pay for it?
They have invested several thousand already into that building for us. One of which includes a new washer and dryer that they immediately put in. Recently, they just put in floodgates, um, for us to install, that building's been flooded, I mean, it's already done three times, um, three or four times. One of which in 2011 ruined the furnace, ruined Mount Neers ambulance, um, and then it did it again, actually about a month before we moved in. So they installed these gates that, um, the way we know more about this, but it walks off, keeps, it's off as the water's boiling like three feet. So they've, they've invested a lot of money already for us to be there. They did, yeah, they had to update some electrical works for us.
Well, in my review of your presentation, I recall you talking about, uh, some of the investment of the fire department.
Yes, and, I mean, we knew that it clearly stated in there, however, that's also, that's, it's a big expense for us, it's even bigger expense for a volunteer fighter department that has essentially less funding than what E M S does.
Well, and, so, I, I still, um, take the stance of if the county needed to provide E M S service in the southern part of the county, it would cost us much more than this expenditure of, um, contribution to whoever. And so, I, for me, the, the request must come because of the contract, the request must come from the Fellisville Volunteer Fire Department...
That's, that's...
So that we can help offset that and do it, because it's contractual, they are reliable, uh, for fixing that.
I don't, I don't think there would ever be an issue between the, the contractor and the contractee that, um...
We just need to make sure we're doing it according to the contract.
The best way to do it.
I mean...
I mean, what are your guys' thoughts on that?
The question I have is if Fellisville comes and asks for the funding, we've already paid for the furnace, the furnace is already installed, it's already been paid, can't pay for that with a check out of our account. How would that, you guys give them the money, they return, have to turn around and pay the money?
That would have to be the agreement, because we should...
Yeah, that's our fault.
I mean, we've, we've had a few community members that have reached out, some have made donations towards this. Um, others are looking at what their businesses can do about trying to get us help for this. I'm not saying Fellisville will or will not, I, I don't know, I can't, I want to...
I think we're overthinking it, because you guys have already paid for the furnace, we could honestly, if we wanted to, if that was the desires of the commission, give a blanket contribution for a certain amount with the idea that that would help offset that cost.
Well, and to, I'll just say this, that, you know, when that area came open, um, and probably some of the issues with the furnace was due to some previous management issues anyway, but, I'll leave it at that. But, you know, Camp did step in and take that area when nobody else could or had the resources or the time to do it, but, I mean, I'll sit there and fight all day for it because my family lives there, and I remember it is, wait 30, 40, 50 minutes for an email, and, you know, I think it's a very essential station in the camp.
So...
We're not downplaying that, you know, I think, honestly, I think we're overthinking it, I don't think we would need to go through the fire department, they've already paid for the furnace, if we wanted to give a contribution, we would just give a contribution.
So you've had other people give contributions for that specifically?
Yes, and they, they are just all amounts, but...
What is the need, is it still the $12,350, is it $12,000?
It would be $12,000, we'll say $12,200.
Okay, so, okay, all right, so, where can we pull this from, that it's the, I mean, how...
How much are we pulling?
$12,200.
Oh, wow, we could pull it from, there are, so, there's not, there's not enough in contributions, we could move it to contributions, we can move anything from contingencies, if we wanted to move stuff out of coal sevens, we could, but you'll hear more about that later on, about why that. Contingencies probably would be the easiest way to do it, because there's more of it.
I mean, is that...
Well, that doesn't even have to be part of our mission.
The desires of, is that the desire of the commission?
Like I said, it would cost us much more to put something in South, in South Preston to cover that area than $12,000 contribution. Camp's been doing it, I, I say, however it has to be, and if we need to legally look at that contract, I think, I think you're right, Hunter, I think it's just we're looking at it, but that was part of the contract, you know, on their part was to do that, but...
Working with FEMA, trying to get that building out of that flood zone. I mean, we've had one land owner renter offer to donate land, put it home, it's well out of flood zone. Uh, we've got that, we've got agreement, you know, the fire department, because they'll have to destroy it, destroy the building.
Correct.
They agreed, everything's in place, just waiting on, right now, an estimate, come back on the building, uh, before we get to FEMA with, you know, the application to do that. Now, if we do that, we can actually use as far as, as an end time match, some of the money, you know, for Ford across there.
Of course.
Well, I mean, and the fact of the matter is, is when there is a need such as this, um, and we have the funding available to do so, I mean, we should be in, interjecting it into areas that are critical need to the county, and that is critical, I mean, no matter how you look at it, and I know you guys are working real hard to, to get to the stopping at the 24th summon, um, you know, you are, and, and we've helped other departments.
And I will say, I mean...
We can't always do that, but we are positioned right now.
When that area came open, it was offered to every agency in the county, whether they were paid or volunteer, and nobody wanted it. And we would have said no.
Okay, here's what I want you to do.
It's not a financially stable area for...
No, it's not.
Here's what I, I want you to do, I want you to look at your actual little contributions that people have given, and I'm going to make a motion, um, up to the amount that was originally requested, you gave us the total that is actually...
May I talk personal?
Sure.
Please.
Yeah.
Before you make that motion, I would like to hear about the, the other issues we have coming up first, with the different monies and things like that, before we make this motion, okay? Because I think we can wait on the motion until we hear about these different first purchases we have to make, or computers and things like that.
To clarify that, John, that has really nothing to do with the amount that we're talking about here, but it has to do specifically with line items.
Okay.
There are certain line items we should, should or shouldn't use. This amount is not significant enough to make it in anything that we're talking about.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, no, no.
Before I did anything, that's what I wanted to know.
It's just when we were talking specifically about particular line items, where we could pull it, that's where I said, we, we really need to wait and see how we're...
I just don't like writing the check.
In terms of the amount of the money, that's, that's not, if you say, go find this, I would be back to you in two seconds.
I just don't like writing the check, if I get the money to break.
That's, that's not, that's not the issue.
No, it's, it's not, the contributions we've gotten so far is $109.
There was a community member that was going to look at, you know, seeing if they, the business that they work for could help out, or could help point us in a direction, you know, of maybe grants or something out there to, to help us, um, but we have not got anything from them, they were just going to look to see what they could do. We have received a hundred dollar check and nine dollars in cash, because at the time the, the gentleman wanted to help, and that was all the cash he's had on him, so we, we very much appreciated any small donations, yes.
It's nice of them.
It all, even a dollar comes out, you see.
Okay, so that leaves, if you perceived $109 towards that specifically, um, that leaves a balance of $12,241, and so, at this time, I know that we make a contribution to Camp South for the sole purpose of reimbursing, uh, Camp for the expenditure that they had on the H B A C for the South Station.
Let me show pull in a second to reimburse Camp Ambulance for this purchase of the furnace up to the amount that they blew to the contract with the staff. Commissioner Stan?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
And also, uh, when you guys, um, we have this, can you just give us a copy of the stuff you paid and stuff on...
Sure.
And they will be ready to get with you to see exactly what has been.
Okay. I, I just have a, a quick clip. Camp South isn't a particular entity, right? It's just... I just needed to make sure that, I need a different W, not a...
No, that's all the...
Okay, that's all I needed.
It's not for this ad portion.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
Now, it brings us down to, if he would send a bug report.
Yes, so...
Have we gotten anybody?
Send a visual last report, yeah, so...
We've gotten a few. Yeah, so, in, in terms of the Health Department representative, Dr. Fred Conwell, which, which seems to be, um, I, I, I'm going to ask Hunter about probation office in terms of, Crystal is who we sort of need to, but...
Yeah, and as you guys know, that is my mother, which there wouldn't be, well, it's in our advisory board, they don't make decisions, but I would like it for not, to not be my mother, but Janet is leaving.
Yeah, Todd?
Todd is leaving, going to Alabama.
So like two and three are gone.
So the only one she would have left would be Carrie, Bill has no desire to be on the board.
Okay, then we, so let's follow back up with them. Casey for Community Corrections is pretty much a lock. The Sheriff's Office, D H H R, and the Board of Ed, I, I, we have the two that we have sort of discussed internally, in terms of the public, I, I don't know if we, do we want to talk about that right now?
Now, all right, and once again, I want to ask a question, now, the person that we appointed to represent us, okay, where are, are they going to be separate and apart from the board, or are they going to be one of those people on as the public?
Well...
That's my question, because otherwise you end up with like an extra person.
She's a Mon Health employee, she could fall under Mon Health.
Okay.
So we could fit it in right there.
What, Lola?
Lola.
Yeah, we could put Lola there.
I, I think that would make sense, because if that person is one of, if that's one of these needs, that should be...
Yeah, Lola's the...
In fact, we should have Meredith as another person.
Okay, and then we get into the Sheriff's Office, one representative, um, we have communicated to the Sheriff of...
Haven't heard, eh?
We have...
Well, here's a simple, here's a simple thing, and this is our fault, and my fault also, I mean, my fault primarily, we did not say by this date.
Yeah.
And that is a problem, and that was my fault, that was never said was my fault, because I had learned a long time ago, if you tell me as soon as possible, that will never happen. So, put a date on it that we need a response by May... So put a date on it that we need a response by May, what is our?
Next week, yeah.
No, 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 next week.
Next week.
Two weeks, yeah. Oh, sorry.
Well, then, I mean, you know, appointing people all day long, we're just going to have.
May fourteenth.
We've got to have a firm commitment because this is very serious and if they're not vested in.
So far, everyone we have mentioned and the two from the, have already expressed interest and are interested.
And the, in, in terms of the public, the ones we have discussed would be.
I just don't want people on it that are just told we have another position. I want people that are really vested in.
DHHR, we have not heard from, from rich back now too.
So we're going to get May tenth.
May tenth?
Right before our meeting on the fourteenth, okay? And if we still don't have a response.
We can get the probation office quickly.
I think so too.
DHR should be.
May seventh is our meeting. Do we not want to do it, have a decision by this or the sixth?
Here's the problem with that then. If we want to do that, then we, we basically got to tell them by, we need it by next week, next Friday.
Well, we would have to have it, yeah, by the third, by May third.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'd prefer them to push them that.
Well, but that's ten days, they could, I mean.
They should know by May third.
Yeah, so if we know by May third, if they have it on the agenda, and if it doesn't work out, no, you can do it.
They can, they can.
Long as we've got it done, I.
I, I just don't want to.
We need.
Okay, well, I will, I will, I'll reach out to these people on the House of the Commissioner, me and Nate. And we will let them know we need a decision by May third.
Yep.
Now, we have, we have several interests from the public.
Correct.
Uh, we have shortlisted people, but I, I don't know if we want to talk about that now, if we want to.
No, can you do us a favor?
Yes.
If you shortlisted them, would you email those ones so we can review them before?
Because we have letters from everybody.
Yeah, that, that would be fun. We'll review it, that way we can, one, if, even if we don't get a response back to these people by the third, we can at least let those ones for the board at our next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, and they have all expressed interest, like, have followed up about interest.
Yeah, we can at least get those people in line, know they are.
By that meeting, yeah, by that meeting, we should have a commitment from every serving area. We're looking for a commitment and should be able to make a final decision on the board. Okay.
I just don't want to kick it on down to the test and then the following week, and then we're through May. I just want to get back.
No, that's fine, I have no problem. I, that, like I said, that was never said on my part. I should have said when they were here, right, when we made that decision that day, you will give us this, uh, April first, and that's the end of it. You know what I mean? But I didn't do that, and that's my fault, I was there for a second. All right, uh, call it a business, court.
New business.
Reconfiguration bid.
This counts to me.
Let's reopen on Friday.
I love it.
Happy Tuesday, all.
Happy Tuesday, sir.
Happy Tuesday, Nate.
Yay! What you have before you in your packet is the email from Michael Mills of the Mills Group that was also sent to the media, Jennifer and Jacob, you should have received it on Sunday, with his recommendation of awarding the Preston County Courthouse Reconfiguration Project to the Jarrett Construction Services Incorporated. Jarrett was a low bid at five hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars, while Veritas came in at five ninety-nine, two fifty-nine. Both the facility supervisor, Kevin Lichten, and myself agree with Mr. Mills's recommendation. And at this point, I humbly request that Commission make a motion to award the bid, including the add alternate to Jarrett Construction Services Incorporated in the amount of five hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and sixty-five for the base bid and three thousand six hundred and sixty-eight for the add alternate for a total of five hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-three.
Two thirty-three.
Yeah.
All right, at this time, I move to approve, uh, the bid and award it to Jarrett Construction Services for the courthouse reconfiguration, uh, project in the, uh, uh, total amount of five hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Second. All right, Mission Florida, second set of bid. Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. And that night, the great thing about this, it was not going into lowest bid. They actually will start sooner and finish sooner according to their schedules.
They're, they're.
That is another great point.
Yeah, and so everyone is reading my mind and the next word's on my page, which I love, which I love.
Sorry to interrupt.
Uh, no, that's okay. So their, their, uh, start date is the thirteenth of May, uh, to run through October thirteenth. Uh, let me give you the timeline. Uh, Michael and I got off the phone this morning, and what will happen now is he will reach out for the beginning of next week to begin to have a meeting, not necessarily in this room, but in our offices with all the principal players, uh, to let them know about us beginning to formulate things moving forward. Uh, all contracts and all bills and stuff will be sent to the Mills Group to be reviewed before they make it to our door.
Okay.
Uh, so we will have a screening process for any kind of invoice matters at that point. Um, and I have, and we'll talk about the funding stuff here just in a little bit.
Okay.
Um, Hunter looks like he's ready to ask a question.
Oh, no, I was just going to state that the bids were very competitive, very loaded to very good companies, and they came back lower than projected, which is always good.
And, and.
Which was my prediction.
And, yeah, and Hunter and Samantha are excited because they came with, oh, and I am staring at someone who is going to buy me lunch sometime in the future. Um.
Well, you were like banging on eight, eight.
I had, I said eight fifteen.
And I'm like, no, we were.
Listen, I was the next, I, I am my mother's son, so I was the negative, as negatives we could get.
You know me, I was that.
As negatives we could get. Uh, but.
A lot of people were agreeing with me.
And.
I did not, I was not praying along my thoughts here.
Now, we move on to the second round in new business, which is as we discussed during the budget meetings, we would like to consider moving all of our alarm, alarm monitoring and inspection services to one company.
Right.
What you have before you are the contracts from Brink's Montronic's for alarm monitoring and fire inspection for the courthouse and annex. And while Brink's already does monitoring for the Sheriff's Office, the revised contract before you would add fire inspection as well. Since we elected to go forward with these contracts during the budget meetings, I humbly request that the Commission make three separate motions. The first is for Brink's to do the fire inspection and basic monitoring for the courthouse at a cost of one hundred and fifty-two dollars a month. I humbly ask that the Commission approve this contract with Brink's and authorize the President to sign the first document before you in this packet.
Can you entertain a motion to, for Brink's to do our fire inspection and monitoring?
I move for Brink's, um, to do the, uh, services stated in the contract for the Preston County Courthouse for the amount of one hundred and fifty-two dollars per month and authorize the President to sign this contract.
Second, Mission Florida, second, to approve the same contract with Brink's for fire inspection and monitoring. Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
The second contract in your packet is for Brink's to do the fire inspections and wet, dry sprinkler inspection at the Sheriff's Office at a cost of five hundred and fifteen dollars a month. I will note here that this is an important component that was, that we became very, very familiar with about around a year and a half ago, given our flood, so this will alleviate that in the future. Um, and so therefore, I humbly ask the Commission to approve this contract with Brink's and authorize the President to sign.
At this time, I move to approve this contract with Montronic's for the services of fire inspection and.
Wet, dry sprinkler.
Wet, dry sprinkler inspection for the Preston County Sheriff's Office for a cost of five hundred and fifteen per month.
Oh, which President signed.
And authorize the President to sign.
I will second that motion.
For a second to approve this contract, Commissioners. Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Yes.
The final is for Brink's to do the fire inspection and monitoring for the courthouse annex. Now, this one is a little different as it will include an installation fee of three hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-five cents alongside a monthly fee of three hundred and twenty dollars. All of this information is broken down on the first page email of your packet, so you can see that. Uh, but at this cor, this time, then, I humbly ask the Commission to approve this contract for the courthouse annex with Brink's and authorize the President to sign.
I move to authorize this Brink's contract, um, for the courthouse annex monitoring and, uh, and a monthly fee of three hundred and twenty dollars and also a one-time installation of the, of three hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-five cents and authorize the President to sign.
Second, Mission Florida, second to approve this contract with the annex. Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And that moves us into my report. I believe.
Awesome.
So as far as the tech, so this is where the good news stops, uh, or at least for a little bit. As for the technology update, I have, uh, what was requested by the Commission to discuss at length with IT MyChair are specifically our computer needs. Um, and unfortunately, the news is somewhat dire. By October twenty twenty-five, Windows ten will no longer be supported. And so, um, we will need, uh, to update a significant portion of our computer stores arsenal. Um, the order before you is for thirty-four units, as you see in the quote.
Right.
Um, and this is going to be necessary at this point for two reasons. One, it will buy us some time before we need to replace the vast majority of our computers. Two, it actually is going to save us money. The projection into next year for this, you're going to look at anywhere from a five to nine percent increase on the base. They also cut us seventy dollars per machine if we ordered thirty-four versus if we ordered twenty-two. Uh, so at the, at the end of the day, we have to have it, we have to have it soon. We can either wait and buy the entire fleet later, or we can start shipping away that now.
Yeah.
Um, and like I said before, again, the Dell quote that you see before you as opposed to the Dell quote that was previous, like savings of seventy dollars per machine.
Yeah, I see that.
Um, it's recommended that we move forward with ordering all thirty-four new machines at a total cost of twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents. Um, and since as the Commission expressed during the budget meetings that we try and get computers for people during this fiscal year, I have already worked with our bookkeeper on preparing a purchase, purchase order for said machines. And so for, therefore, I humbly request that the Commission approve the purchase of thirty-four Autoplex micro four, four factor machines and accessories from Dell at the cost of twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Samantha? Second. Mission Florida, second, approve this computer purchasing. Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
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 Excellent.
Nate, thank you for giving that cause down to his owner. It was closer to, what, thirty-two or thirty-three thousand?
Uh, I, I'm going to take full credit for something I didn't do, so it sounds good.
I mean, it, it's, it's significant, it's a significant amount.
That should include the machines for the offices that are.
Yeah, yeah, and that, well, that, and then some.
I can't remember the exact amount, but it was thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, 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 we got it squared. Now, we have made significant purchases today, and so there might be questions about, well, Nate, how might we pay for said items? That takes us to our next items, a memorandum.
That's been investigated well before decision.
Well, before decision, in the May, uh, the memorandum that will actually explain something will begin with the funding plan for the courthouse reconfiguration project. And I will read this, and there are copies for the media that should have already received this as well. The accepted offer for the Preston County Courthouse Reconfiguration Project from Jarrett uh, is for a total of five hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-three. And again, that includes the add alternate for replacing thirty-three lighting fixtures on the second floor of the courthouse outside the contract area at a cost of three thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Upon the recommendation from the Mills Group, an estimated fifteen percent of the total price, or eighty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-four, is to be held in reserve for change orders, bringing the total estimated cost for this project to six hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Funding this roughly six hundred and fifty thousand dollar project will go as follows. One hundred thousand dollars has already been secured in the form of the hundred thousand dollar reimbursement for the twenty-twenty-four WB CFI A grant we awarded in January. All remaining uncommitted ARPA funds, which would be the total amount, it right now, as it stands right now, is four hundred thousand, two hundred and eighty-four, but I listed this just as approximately four hundred thousand dollars, could be reserved for this project. What that would require us to do now is for the Commission to simply make a motion authorizing us to commit all of the uncommitted ARPA funds to this project. And therefore, I humbly request that the Commission make a motion to commit all of the remaining ARPA funds to the Preston County Courthouse Reconfiguration Project. It'll be project number twenty-seven.
At this time, I move that we commit all uncommitted ARPA funds to the Preston County Courthouse Reconfiguration Project.
For a second to, um, using the uncommitted, you can commit them to this project. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. That not only funds the vast majority of this project, but it also satisfies our requirement to have all ARPA money committed by the end of December of twenty twenty-four. So congratulations to everyone on that as well. Finally, any remaining funds will need to be taken from Coal Severance, and I've included the line item there as well. What we will do is we will budget this accordingly when we do our Coal Severance carryover budget revision. Uh, and the bookkeeper and I have already discussed how to do this and already have a planned bill of order. We estimate that at approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, which we will have, and that is how we come by our six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Nate, I do have a question.
Okay.
So you're recommending that we leave CARES funding as a loan?
Well, so let's talk about that then. So one of the requests that have been made about software solutions, uh, and the software solutions didn't, we didn't earmark that directly when we finally concluded our budget. You know, our final budget sort of thing. There's a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in CARES right now that has no time commitment and no general commitment. In addition, we also have another hundred thousand dollars in the LATCF that we could use. That's probably better suited for a more capital project, so, so we could, we could do that. But since we hadn't earmarked that, and since we had discussed providing that system, it probably made more sense, since we were on the fence, to reserve something we didn't have to commit or necessarily use. Does that make sense, Commissioner?
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't matter either way. It would just be nice to clean the CARES funding account up and no longer have that additional account. But Coal Severance has no, well, we've earmarked stuff out of.
We have.
But there's no commitment there to spend that funding.
In fact, strategically enough, we earmarked out of Coal Severance, one hundred and forty thousand dollars for said projects. That was so close. Uh.
I'm, I'm fine.
But we can, we can, we can certainly, and, and the, the, the better part of this is committing the ARPA funds and using the grant funds first will allow us.
That has to be done, that has to be.
Well, but it also allows us to access funds in this fiscal year that we don't have to, one, not relying on anything for carryover costs, or two, that would do any impact to the current budget going forward. So the idea is whatever after July we may need to clean up, we would have, this is a recommendation, but we would have latitude to use.
Right.
So in Commissioner Thomas's point, we could absolutely use CARES at that point if we so decide.
If we need to, yep.
And I think we need to make it clear that this project is completely funded by a state grant, federal dollars.
Yes.
And fed, federal dollars, so that is no county taxpayer money.
No, state and federal dollars all the way there. And it is manned, simply because it is being mandated by the state without any, it's an unfunded mandate by definition. So that is the most strategic plan, especially given, you know, if we're not, if you're not certain about your budget lines, then you use the ones, the numbers that you are certain of that won't impact.
And you provide us that Coal Severance budget provision that that.
Yeah, and, well, and at that time, we'll have a better idea of where we need, and we can, we can adjust for it. So think of it in terms of phase, grant first, ARPA to cover the rest.
Yeah.
That gets us through, and then from that point, we, we, and I, we have to.
We're looking like July, summer.
Well, yeah, and that's the thing, I, I want to get us out of this fiscal year into the next fiscal year, and this is the safest way to do it without doing any negative impact, um, to any of our budget lines. Um, speaking of which budget lines, let's talk about budget provisions. Uh, and that takes us to our last budget revision, which has to do with Uh, and that takes us to our last budget revision, which has to do with the receipt of the $132,373 we got for, from the insurance for the, uh, flood in the sheriff's office. I have spoken with the bookkeeper about this as well, and so, speaking of how we are gonna pay for various things, uh, this budget revision, uh, first, we increased the reimbursement, uh, uh, external reference of 001382, by the entire amount of the check of $132,373, and this is how we allocate that money accordingly. Into professional services, $53,458. That gives back to the sheriff's office all of the money they need for the remaining items left that are necessary for Tanya's spreadsheet list. She and I have already spoken, she called me honey, so I guess that's gonna be a win, um, so, that's good. Uh, so, if everybody is pleased there, that will take care of that issue. The computer issue that we just spoke of, one, uh, two, $28,146 will be moved into 001428459 to pay this out of data services, that will cover the cost of the computers. The remaining $50,769 will go into contingencies, and Dawn, this is why, what I was saying about the amount of money that was being requested by camp wasn't really a significant figure, it was just where we wanted to pull it from. Here's a pot of $50,769, from which we could easily draw.
I'm just, I just wanted to make sure that I'm playing.
Yep, a- and, and so, at this time, I humbly request that the Commission make a motion to pr-, uh, approve the budget revision as presented, and the other budget revision for me.
At this time, I move to approve, um, the budget provision as it has been presented by our county minister.
And all the others.
Well, I, I was gonna do two motions.
No. You can do it all at once.
Yeah, either way.
Okay, and the, um, WBEU extension budget revision.
I have a second question.
Mission Florida, second, through all budget provisions as they are presented to.
Nate?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Yes.
Finally, since everyone is tired of me being up here, in terms of the facilities update, we are moving along with our projects in the sheriff's office, waiting now for a counter talk to finish the last of our projects. And we should have all the work completed by no later than the second week of May, just in time for construction to start in the courthouse. We also have started work on a number of special projects in the animal shelter, and we will have a more complete update on these projects next week, as we get more fully involved with said projects. Speaking of the animal shelter, just a reminder though, that we have posted this on, uh, their Facebook page, uh, as well as, uh, it should be on our website as well, just a reminder that it is closed. The animal shelter is closed to the public this week, for annual cleaning, and now for some much-needed maintenance. And that concludes my report, thank you very much.
All right. Well, I see the assessor has made it your final, so we have a tax, backtrack a little bit to the tax correction list.
Don't get tangled up here, sorry. I have a tax correction in the amount of $121.50, thank you very much. I make a motion to approve the tax correction, in the amount of $121.50, as presented by the assessor.
Okay. Mission Florida, second to, except, and approve the tax correction, Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, Commissioner Stone, I'm listening, so Commissioners, comments, Commissioners, if you have anything for us today?
Um, I have a couple things, um, happy to note that, uh, there have been, uh, several applications come in for the, uh, Assistant, uh, PDA position, and so, that process will be beginning, um, working with the executive committee and to get that done, um.
When do you guys say you will have the, the.
Hopefully, as soon as we get through these applications, um.
I mean, you never know.
Right, right, if it might not turn out anything fruitful, but it possibly could, I'm reviewing some of that, it appears that it could be. Um, so, um, the next thing that I've been working on, um, is, of course, that water project out in Newburgh, um, looking through and talking with Sheena Hunt, and I know she's been in contact with the town as well, um, but there's a whole lot of explanation on how the funding has, uh, come in, um, when the, the town has requested, you know, critical need, and, and multiple things. This has been a long time coming, um, and.
Yeah, they reached, I believe, I know that.
They talked all three of us.
Yeah, and so, uh, with that, you know, when McKinley, uh, the funding, funding that came through, um, fell short, um, it was gonna have to be a revision of that water project, that would exclude some homes in the area. But, uh, due to, uh, some other things, um, the funding, uh, has been completely, uh, obtained, with the exception of 100, and I think it's like rated $166,000.
$166,000.
And so, I've really been thinking on this, and, and working with Sheena, talking with her, brainstorming through some things. And the county commission, uh, awarded ARPA funding, and they got $200,000 for a bid overrun. And so, my recommendation, so that the town doesn't have to run out and get a loan, would be just to redirect, go through the process that we've allowed other ARPA fund, uh, funding projects to do. Redirect that $200,000 to cover that $166, and if there is a bid overrun, which, you know, hopefully, the sooner they get started, the more accurate the bid is, um, I don't wanna delay that anymore. So, if we direct, redirect that, then that gets them started.
That is an exceptional idea, I wasn't on the Commission when you guys allocated that funding.
Right.
And I did not know that it was for a bid overflow for that project, so that would make complete sense.
And, and, and it was because, you know, you can't use matching federal dollars with other things, and so, it had to, we wanted to make sure that there was some funding that we were securing for, for Newburgh from that, because it was the mission of the Commission at that time, to make sure we were interjecting funding all over the county.
There can be uncertainties about, you know, bid overruns, but the, the fact is, if they keep waiting, the project cost is only gonna go up.
It's gonna go up. So, that's gonna be my recommendation, and that actually will require the town.
They will have to make, yeah.
To submit that request, and so, if we can communicate that with them, that that's our desire, that they do that, then, um, they can submit the proper stuff, they can work with them to get that done, and then we can get that project, uh, moving along and approve that next week.
We already have another change in scope on the agenda for next week anyway, so we'll fit right in.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, cause I, when I talked to the town recorder, I suggested, and I, I didn't, we allocated money to her, I wonder what it was exactly.
Yes. For a bit of a.
I didn't have my notes, I mean, I want to talk to her. And I actually invited her to reach out to, to the Economic Development Office of the state, possibly get a hundred grand or so, it was possible to.
Well, and, and it should never be the goal when looking at these, uh, public, uh, expansions of, you know, utilities to, oh, we're just gonna cut you off, we should always do everything to, and make sure we're taking in everybody that we can.
Try to fill in, with the, um, PSP number one, and the water that's provided by Taylor County.
Sounds good, thank you.
So, yeah.
Anything else, or?
Um, I mean, I have other stuff, but that was the important stuff.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Um, congratulations to the eighty.
Second.
Eighty-second Buckwheat Festival royalty court, can't even remember the number now, I think that was the 78. Getting old, oh my. Um, that was great, it's great to see, um, young people involved in our county. We have an IT meeting tomorrow, it's gonna be good.
Yeah.
I just.
I believe that.
Um, a question for the other two commissioners, has anyone heard anything from Wendy Crease about her handle?
Um, no, I've not, but I know she was working on, the last I talked to her, it's not been a recent update, but she was working through, and I thought she was getting close on it, but it's not been that sweeping.
Got a phone call with Wendy Crease later today, back.
Okay, perfect.
There you go, just bring it up with it.
That's probably what it is then.
Okay, bring it up, well. Okay. And then, Nate, next week, if you could put Preston County Tennis Association.
Oh, yeah, okay.
On the agenda, um, I got into contact with a couple of them, and we're gonna work on.
What, do you want that under new business?
Yeah, new business.
Okay.
And it's, that's Bill and Terry, you talked to them?
Robert, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
I believe that's all I have tonight.
This Friday, we will be doing a public test of the voting machines.
Yes.
At the election center, to make everyone aware of that, and anybody's worried, it is a public test, it's just so everybody knows they can trust these, this equipment, make sure it doesn't, what it's supposed to be recording on. Is it?
Um, I have one other thing, but Dawn had mentioned it, so I didn't, just.
Well, the National Day of Prayer, I'm sure, I was gonna mention the National Day.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah, yeah, that, well, people need a plan, so I'd like to mention it a couple weeks out, the National Day of Prayer is May 2nd.
Yeah, and it will start at and complete at noon, should take about 45 minutes.
And I've been, um, talking to a lot of people about that, and it's actually, um, very encouraging that, uh, there's a lot of these little prayer, uh, groups going on all over the county, at very key, critical places in the county. Um, because, uh, just my personal opinion, you cannot pray enough for your leadership and, and the people in this county, and the strength to keep pushing forward for good things, so.
Nah, I just.
Yeah. Just have to keep plugging up.
All right, no worries. All right, that will do it for today, and at this time, we have our journal.
How are you doing?
How are you doing?
Doing well.